Some show on TV.
Mm hmm. I haven't seen them.
He's finally called a dude one.
Oh.
What'd they win?
We beat the crap out of Carolina. That's all we needed to win.
Ah, here we go.
Well, they only played with one guy. That's why they won.
You're live on YouTube.
Great.
Hey, sir.
Good afternoon. It is five o'clock. The time to call a meeting order. And I'd like to call the role, identify ourselves. That's time I'll identify myself. Mayor Bobby Kilgore. At the Holloway. Who's Anthony?
So does Anthony.
So Anthony here.
Angelia James here.
Lynn Kazan here.
Freddie Gordon here.
Franco McGee here.
Okay, everyone has identified yourself. You're all here. It's time I'll turn the meeting over to our city manager.
I thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to offer a recommendation beginning of the discussion. Uh, the recommendation appears on page three of the staff report. Basically, uh, the city manager, myself allocates about 70 hours during the budget process reviewing and vetting department budget requests. And I incorporate the council's goals and community interests as a basis for prioritizing and sequencing uh, the elements that form the annual operating and capital budget. Um, in my opinion, limiting council's consideration of staffing needs to only one department today, uh, primarily the planning and development department, although appreciated by that department would ignore the fiscal environment that COVID-19 has created and discounts the personnel needs of all the departments in the general fund. Thus, the discussion for adding any other personnel, I would recommend be deferred until the beginning of the third quarter of basically January twenty one, 2021, and include a broader review of all general fund departmental personnel needs. At that time, the actual fiscal impact on the general fund revenues would be better understood. The remainder of the staff report offers, uh, and I'll just give a very high level summary at this moment. Uh, but it offers a high level assessment of the fiscal environment, uh, gap closing strategies if there's a revenue shortfall occurring in the next fiscal year. Third, sequences of priorities that I assign fulfilling personnel requests from one through sixteen percent to developing the spending plan for next fiscal year, and has insights on the planning department's position deficits that, uh, in their operational status. So very briefly, I've offered council a recommendation to revisit personal requests of all departments in the third quarter, January twenty one, 2021. However, if your intent on narrowly focusing your attention on the needs of one department staffing needs this afternoon, I'd be happy to introduce the remainder of the material and then refer you to uh, staff for any detailed questions you might have. And subject to your questions for me or of our staff, either Lisa, Lisa, Lisa. Uh, that concludes my initial comments.
This is Franco McGee speaking. I don't have an issue with, um, um, waiting until, um, January or whenever you noted to have a discussion about positions. I just wanted this one to be included in that conversation because I don't think it was initially. Um, and I also wanted to get some information on the planning position and the history within and, you know, just get some data. Or and I would like for Lisa to kind of go over that information, um, as noted.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gordon, was you, was you able to understand everything by the zoom? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, for any discussion now, uh, uh, if anyone has got anything to identify yourself, if you have a discussion.
I have a question. If this is planning position, planning department efficiency discussion. So, um, so we're going to, I'm not going to go into that, uh, discuss, discussing the efficiency part of it.
Okay. By the way, for the members that, if you could please identify yourself, because since we're still doing electronic meeting, you're required, when you start talking, to make sure you please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely, Anthony. Do you want me to restate my question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I said I would like to go into the discussion of the planning department.
Okay. Well, I'll have to say this is Freddie Gordon. I, I didn't actually hear what Saluda said.
Okay. I said, again, I'm Saluda Anthony. I would like to go into the planning department efficiency discussion.
And just for the record, Freddie Gordon asked a question before council member Anthony restated her questions. Again, if everyone can please make sure you identify yourself, that would, that would allow us to comply with the law. Thank you very much for doing so, council member Anthony.
I'm Mayor Kilgore. Larry, uh, Mr. Face, I see Lisa's all down. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Stilwinder, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Monroe. Uh, just want to make sure I'm, I'm understand the question. Uh, part of the packet information, we do have, um, we do have a survey that was conducted. We also have the performance measures with the department as far as planning related functions. And then, um, of course, the, the history of the positions within the department. Which area are you specifically referring to?
Uh, since the question is about hiring a planner, I'd be interested in that particular portion of absolutely.
Okay. Well, the planning department, um, consists of six divisions. One of the divisions is the planning division. Uh, prior to 2010, before the downturn in the economy, we were, uh, pretty busy. We had six planners. Uh, the downturn in the economy, we lost three planners. This division has, uh, is the only division within our department that hasn't regained a position back. Uh, from 2010 up until about 2016, 2017, it wasn't as much of a problem, but now we are starting to see an increase in planning related projects and requests, particularly conditional district rezonings, because those we had about 10 in 2010 and we had about 32 as of April 2020. And the reason I refer to that particular component is because those particular projects take a minimum of six months to get through the process. So our increase in workload is not so much of perm zoning, I mean, zoning permits and residential, um, review of houses, which will come later now that we've started reviewing, I mean, approving a lot of residential projects. But our increase in workload is historic district, um, certificate appropriate request, and then the conditional district rezonings or planning related projects in general, um, because they do take a lengthy amount of time, numerous meetings, numerous plan review, um, numerous conversations with applicants, developers, council members regarding those projects. So, uh, from 2010 to now, um, we've started to see an uptick in the economy, which is good. And we are, we are deficit, um, some planner positions.
With the city, this is Franco McGee speaking, but the city outside, how many planners are recommended for efficiency?
Uh, we, research was conducted, um, and those municipalities within North Carolina, uh, between 30,000 and 40,000 were looked at. Uh, we looked at the jurisdiction, the square miles for each jurisdiction, the number of positions they had within the planning department. Uh, typically, a municipality of our size would have at least a minimum of two more people. Um, and I speak to not just of that survey, but also the experience here in the planning department with the City of Monroe. Speaking in before 2010, we had six positions. Um, it was pretty busy around 2007. So over the years, I've seen that increase in projects and the need for to have at least one to two more planners back. Um, one would be great. And that would at least help with our deficit, um, to try to start to gain those lost positions that we had before.
Saluda Anthony question. With, with the new subdivisions, the new zoning, um, and with the responsibilities that the planners had, and I think you named some of those, um, do you feel that the, uh, four planners, if, if they can handle all that efficiency, are these, uh, would it overwork you and, and, you know, maybe not allow you to do as well of a job on which you would like to?
As we continue to increase in planning projects and eventually reviewing those residential permits once those subdivisions begin construction, we are concerned that there will be an impact to services. Uh, we have really 2.5 planners. I consider myself point five since I'm the director of the department that really have, that cover 30 square miles and 35,000 population here with the city.
Angelia James, um, I know in your package you mentioned something about Central Atlanta might be able to help. In what way would they be able to help?
Uh, part of the decision package for the planning physician, there's always a, a question, can this service be contracted out? Uh, there are Central Atlanta Council of Governments. I'm not sure if in focus provides planning related services, but there is that possibility that we could explore a contract service for some projects.
Frank McGee here. Does, do, do we, uh, recoup any funds or revenue in the planning department that may be able to offset some of the, uh, the cost of hiring a new planner?
Do, we do generate some revenue regarding the fees to process projects. Um, so there is a, roughly, I looked at this year as of May 21st, we generated about 89,000. So that's just fees related to different planning projects. Now, some of these subdivisions that have already been approved, I did look at what would be the tax revenue generated at 100% build out, which sometimes those projects do take subdivisions take year to two to three years for the 100% build out. But some of them, um, just I picked five different projects that we've already been approved. One of them was Poplin Grove at 126 single family lots. The tax revenue generated from that particular subdivision would be roughly 194,000. Uh, another project that was picked was the, um, Simpson Farms is 194 single family lots. The tax revenue generated for that at 100% build out is 281,000. So there are some tax revenue that we do generate once those subdivisions are, um, at 100% build out.
Frank McGee with another, with another question. Aren't there particular funds that only planning can utilize though? That where we recoup some fees? What, what about those, those funds?
The state legislators, um, changed the law, and I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, um, a couple of years ago, where all revenue generated in building standards has to be spent in building standards division. As I mentioned, the planning department consists of six divisions, which, um, is planning, permitting, building standards, code enforcement, community development, and community maintenance. So that revenue for building permits has to be spent in the building division. Cannot be spent within planning or permitting or code enforcement.
But some of those funds could be, Franco McGee here, but some of those funds could be reallocated within your department. So if, if money is budgeted for, for building funds, um, we could not fund as much and put some of that money towards the planning department. Is that correct? If needed be.
Councilmember McGee, this is Majeeb Shikhan. Uh, we have to be very careful with any fees charged in the planning and development space due to a continued, um, barrage of, uh, challenges from our friends in the General Assembly over our authority. And in fact, one of the big issues has been the fees that are charged. So we would suggest, and I'll defer the manager, that one of the main issues is if we do say increase certain fees to basically offset a position cost, that would be something that, um, the folks that are challenging it through the home builders would likely seize upon as something to go after. So we would note that while it is always good and inventive to look at that as generating the, the funding for it, we would note that if you were to do that, it is possible that during this short session or next year's long session, we could suddenly lose that funding and you would then be stuck with how you fund that position.
Also, as a point of clarification, um, you're kind of building on what she just mentioned, uh, and permit fees are, are basically restricted to funding inspector related positions. And, um, the Strickland could probably offer further clarification, but, uh, last reported I understood was that the, the revenue from those fees are insufficient to add another position. Uh, but also more broadly, a point that was made earlier about tax, tax revenue coming from subdivisions, that, um, I think, I think almost every department would lay claim to generating that revenue. And more importantly, tax revenue goes to support all general fund operations. And it is insufficient to support our operations solely. We also draw, um, approximately 25, 30%, um, at least current year, we had forecasted, uh, revenues from a sales tax revenue and then some miscellaneous funds. So, uh, it's important to note that, yes, subdivision residential development generates tax revenue. It also creates demand, uh, that is, uh, placed on other departments outside of planning, um, for, uh, resourcing those needs, i.e. public safety, um, and, and other functions.
Mr. Stilwander, Mayor Kilgore. Speaking of the subdivisions, and I know we've got several coming back now, and that's great. Back in two seven, two eight, when we had that, uh, depression or whatever, got different words, people call it everything. Of course, that's when we lost some planners and we lost a lot of folks. Uh, now that some of this is coming back and you're talking about X number of houses and X number of projects. Question is, how the projects we got, how many we got coming out of the ground, number one now? And number two, how long is it going to take to get that $190,000 tactic? We're not talking about next year. We talk about four or five years down the road when this project is built out, when you get to 190,000 or whatever, whatever number you use. Is that correct?
It, it, it takes about roughly three to five years for a subdivision build out. Um, let me pull my, uh, subdivision Excel spreadsheet up real quick and I can speak to how many are under construction right now. I can't remember off the top of my head. We have approximately four subdivisions that are under construction right now. Uh, two are, three are in plan review, one actually, there's four in plan review and one, two, three, four. Four of them are currently going through the design phase for construction.
Okay. I, you're part of this. I don't know if anybody else having problems other than me. How many have we, I mean, if you know, uh, the subdivision we got and the subdivision you're talking about, and the tax basics don't pay, how many houses have we got coming out of the ground right now?
I can't speak to the specific number of houses. I can speak to the number of subdivisions that are under construction, which means they're either doing roads or they're already submitting house, um, permits for review. Can you hear me better now?
I'm sorry. When you, when you say under construction, I know, I know what, I know what under construction mean, but are we talking about we got houses, several houses being built there or are they out there moving dirt trying to get ready to build a house? There ain't many houses coming out of the ground, I can tell you that. We've been on houses, tools, tools.
Uh, currently, we are, we, we know we have two subdivisions that are, are building houses currently.
Okay.
The, the other ones are under construction or currently going through the design phase to submit the construction plans.
Okay. Do you know, I don't mean to keep patchy, not trying to do that. I'm just trying to get, uh, do you know, and you probably, I don't expect you to know. You got any idea how many permits have been issued to actually go out and dig the foundation? Just reach up in there and give me a good picture.
Are less than 50 between both of them currently.
About 35.
About 50.
50.
50. You've got about 50 permits issued.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. 50. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
And so we've got, and I'm no guess at this number two. Hit me with it. We've got about 2,500 houses already, 2,500 houses in different subdivisions approved.
We have 2,666 houses approved. And we have 2,114 that are going through the process now.
I meant to the hundred. We got 2,600, but we only got 50 less right now, driving nails.
50. Approximately 50 right now, driving nails.
Okay. We got 50 out of 2,600.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Angelia James, um, makes a question for you. So just kicking back in on his question. So what's the total number of permit issues you think would be for the year?
Total number of permits issued for the year.
And also new, um, permits for new construction as well.
I have it here somewhere. Uh, currently to date, the total number of zoning permits, which, um, includes residential zoning permits is 631. That's as of April 2020. That doesn't include May or anything moving through June.
Saluda Anthony, so there were no permits issued in May?
As of April 2020, those are, there's 631 zoning permits.
Okay. Angelia James again, Lisa. So in the budget book, we have a 2019 actual number, but we don't have a 2020 target number. What would that target number be?
We don't, we don't really have a, a target number for the 2020. We don't predict, we can't really project what permits are going to come in as far as residential houses, uh, accessory buildings, fences. These are, we go off actual numbers for the zoning permits.
Okay. So Angelia James, so this position you requesting is basically for rezoning and stuff for the historical district. And you said something about, um, um, reconditioning. Is that, is that true?
Yeah. As, as we move forward in, in the future, we, we've already seen an increase in the economy due to the number of requests for various planning projects. Uh, right now are the conditional district rezonings that we've seen a big increase. Those take six months. Um, really, that's a, that's putting it on the low end to process from beginning to end. And then, um, on the flip side, once the residential subdivisions start going under construction, that will be an increase in permits, residential permitting review, zoning permits.
Okay. So Angelia James again, so do you have a number of what the increase would be? But you keep saying it's going to increase, but are you projecting about how many?
Well, once, uh, once all the subdivisions start going under construction, we'll have 2,600 permits for just residential houses. That doesn't include the fences, uh, accessory buildings, home occupations, other zoning permits that we review.
Okay. Ms. Lisa, uh, talking about the 2,600. How long is it going to be for the 2,600? You're not going to do all these 2,600 houses in the first six months or the first year or first 18 months. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How long do you, how long are you thinking it'll be for? You, we talked about 2,600 houses. And I, I know we don't know exactly, and I understand it. Well, but the 2,600 is not going to happen in the next month, six months, or 12 months or 18 months. Is that correct?
You're correct. It will take four to five years for those to, um, go through construction. The increase is, we're continuing to get those type of projects, which is great. That means the economy is doing good. We're growing, um, and, and that, that's fantastic for the City of Monroe. We're just concerned since we lost three people before 2010, will we continue to be able to provide the same service that we've been providing, uh, many years? It was not, um, much of a problem because we weren't having a lot of, as many planning projects being requested as we do now.
Uh, Freddie Gordon here. Lisa, could I just ask, uh, just out of curiosity, say March the 15th, uh, of this year, have you seen any slowdown in the planning and zoning department, uh, with these projects and the COVID-19 issue?
Not, not really. We're, we're, we're still steady. Uh, we're still, uh, having conversations with developers. I mean, we just had a pretty large project that was submitted within the last couple of weeks. That's, um, the largest one we, we've, we've seen so far. So we haven't, I mean, it slowed down with the conversations for a, a little while, but now that the, uh, stay at home order has been lifted and normal operations are, are proceeding, we are starting to have more meetings and conversations with proposed development. We have one for next week, a new, new residential subdivision.
Um, Lisa, Council, um, Angelia James, let me ask you a question about our software system, the permit system that you have. Is it online yet?
We are doing validation testing, so we're testing the software. We started on Friday, uh, for the permit center, the building standard module that deals with plan review and inspections. We'll be testing the planning module tomorrow and then the code enforcement module on Thursday. There'll be about an eight week, um, timeframe that will continue testing the system to make sure all the, uh, everything's processed and properly, the fees are being added correctly. Just make sure everything's working properly. So our projected go live with the new software is, uh, middle September, end of September.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Holloway here, and I apologize to all for, uh, being tardy getting my system set up. I wish I had Lisa's confidence in the economy. That's, uh, that glass isn't half full, Lisa. It's, uh, running over and thank you and your fine staff for all you do. Um, I, I think that, um, that right now we are seeing developments that have been, been on the developer's burner for a long time and maybe it's been put on ours now. Um, what's going to happen in the next three months, six months, next year? Um, I equated it this morning to a pilot without instrumentation flying into a cloud bank. You really don't know what's ahead of you and, um, in housing, um, the people's jobs don't come back. They don't buy houses and consequently builders don't build them. So I think we need to, to, to move cautiously and confidently. We, um, we've got some very uncertain times, I'm afraid, in front of us. I'm not saying there's storm clouds, but we've got clouds we've got to navigate. That's it.
Anyone else?
I want to, Councilman, um, Angelia James, I want to revisit the, um, police department positions. With all the veterans and people retiring, um, might need a restructure and look at some things going on in that area. Um, I would like to look at that also.
Well, we, uh, if my understanding is correct, we can't do that today because it's not been advertised. It's not on the agenda. That can be done. Is that right? Uh, Mr. McGee?
Um, Mayor, I think you can have a discussion, but in terms of, you can discuss it in terms of taking action, it would be essentially, uh, it depends on what recommendation you're making. And if it is to make the recommendation to talk about the time the manager outlined, you could do that. Uh, you can always wait on doing that as well.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's not intended to take action on the current proposed budget tonight.
Mayor.
Yes.
Lynn Kazir here, I thought in our previous discussions, we talked about holding off the fall of the year. Do we see exactly what happened with the pandemic, COVID nine and and the economy in as a whole? I I can't see jumping into talking about hiring a bunch of people when we don't really know where we're going to stand because the governor now is giving two more months of free or no, you can't cut nobody off.
Well, we're hitting on a million dollars on that.
And I know we've got some industry that's still laying off, some of our big industries laying off pretty good, pretty good numbers. So I don't have a problem in looking to the fall of the year to see where we're at. And and, you know, we we do need to have good people, but in the same token, as elected officials, you know, we need to, our goal was to make sure we didn't have to cut into our present employees. And I would, I would really be cautious about jumping into hiring a bunch of people right now.
Yep. Mayor Kilgore, I would, I would echo part of that, if not all of it. You know, we went into this thing with a freeze, a hiring freeze. And I can't see having a hiring freeze and come back by and open a position up. Lisa does a great job, and I want to say they do a great job over there, not only her department, but the other departments as well as for, you know, for individual, for help. And I'm sure that many of the departments out there deserve it, I guess, that's up to the city manager to decide and us to decide if we want to do it. But I I can't see adding a, adding a brand new position that's going to be with us forever and ever, amen, and we got a hiring freeze on. I, with the economy like it is, the, another two months added to the, our utilities down at the Windsor Street area. Not only with that, with revenues down, we down probably, and I'm going to be close to my guess, thirty to forty percent down on sales tax. And let me tell you, thirty, forty percent in Lisa, everyone will agree with that, that's a big chunk of change. Not only that, the hotel tax and and many more I can say you're talking about. I just don't see where we got, got the money that we can actually move into a hiring a brand new position. Like Lynn, maybe, maybe first of the year or the next quarter, we can evaluate, you know, how how our economy is doing. But right now, our economy is as bad for the city of Monroe as it for a lot of these folks' households, said many a time. Our budget with the city is somewhat like a household budget, our city is just much larger. So if you don't have the money to buy a refrigerator at home, something's got to go. If we ain't got the money to just to go out and create a new position, somebody's going to lay. And I agree with Lynn, we need to maintain what we got. And by maintaining what we got and come back first of the year or the next quarter and look at this and whatever else you want to look at would be what I would like. However, everybody's got their own idea, thank you for allowing me, Lisa, and Lisa, thank you for your department, what you do.
Frank McGee here, Frank McGee here. As the manager stated before, and I concur, that, you know, this is something that we needed to have, I want to have a discussion on. Not looking to do it right away because of where we are with COVID nineteen. And and we stated that at the beginning that this would not be something that would happen effective immediately. This is be something that we really evaluate and see if we can do it in in January or in the fall or whenever we figure out what the economy is going to do. I just wanted us to be able to have the conversation to note that the planning department is deficient in this, in its employees. And that with, with, with the projection of the, the economy with the, with the build out, I just wanted to be sure that we were prepared to to take that on, you know. Yes, Lisa and her planners do a great job, but but also we wanted to make sure that we didn't deplete in the service that we provide. You know, we really, with with the new system going online and with the new U D O that's going to be coming out pretty soon, I'm just concerned about us just providing the great customer service, you know. And 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 when people are coming in to spend money and to invest money in our city, I want to make sure that they're getting the best customer service that we have available. And and adding another planner when we really need to, you know, that that's something that I think we do need to have a conversation about to see if that's something that we can do moving forward, just to make sure that we have that in the back of our minds, knowing that that we do need to try to fill one of those positions back that we lost in twenty ten.
Councilman Kazir here, I, you know, there's so many uncertainties out there from COVID nine, the stock market. Any one of these things could set us down a sparrow that that would, would hurt us. And I would like to see us in September have another session like this, talk about where we're at, where's our budget at? How's our funds, how's our sales tax coming? And if things have stabilized, then maybe at that point in time, we would feel comfortable to start to address. And if it's not, then come back again in in November, December and discuss it again. But there's so many unknowns out there right now. I was reading in the paper this morning where one guy decided that it was time to get back in the stock market. It took him two weeks to lose eight hundred thousand dollars at NYSM backstops. So it's just, it is too much unknown out there. I make a motion, revisit this in September.
A second, Angelia James.
All right, let me ask, I've got something I got to do. Council Holloway and Council McGee, could y'all hear and understand all that's been said by Zoom?
Holloway did, yeah.
I'm sorry, did you understand everything that's been said by Zoom? I want to be sure that y'all understood and said it right.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, you said it, all right, I have a motion, Mr. Lynn, you made the motion?
Yes.
Do it again if you will, and give your name.
Councilman Kazir, I made the motion that we revisit this in September to see where we are with our finances. And at that point in time, if we're still not comfortable, we come back in December and revisit it again.
A second, Angelia James.
I have a motion and second, any other discussion?
Comment.
Comment for the time being.
I I just want to say that the need has been demonstrated and, you know, the partners have, have, have a paper, but I, I agree. And, you know, the second wave has not even hit us yet. And not only that, the flu is going to hit us as well. So we have no idea what we're, what we're going to be facing and it's, everything's a toss up right now, but I, I agree with the motion in September.
Any other comments or discussion?
Well, I want another comment, make sure Council Angela James to look at like all the positions that's been proposed, not just planning, but all the positions.
I have a motion and second, all in favor of, of Mayor Kilgore, I.
Actually, Mayor, you have to, you have to do that one by roll call. So instead of just having a vote, you need to call each member specifically. And and then I just want to clarify that I believe the motion is that you're asking to revisit the issue in September. Were you asking to table or just look at the entire issue? Because I think you've also amended the motion to include revisiting all the positions that were listed in the, in the memorandum. Is that correct, Councilmember Kazir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it is to table, and then Mayor, if you'd be so kind as to conduct the vote by roll call, please.
Councilman Anthony?
I, Councilman Anthony, I.
Gordon?
Yes.
Councilman, Mayor Protem Holloway? Councilman James?
Yes.
Councilman Kazir?
Yes.
Councilman McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Kilgore? Yes. So that will be tabled to September, at that time, or anything else, any other discussion for afternoon meeting? If not.
Mayor, 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 this is Larry, I've got, with your, your indulgence and counsels, I'd like to invite Lisa Strickland to offer just a brief kind of overview update of, of our intent to handle and accommodate our, our, our business and commerce regarding the governor's last executive, executive order.
Hey, Larry.
All right, Larry.
Sir.
Is that you or the bird talk?
That's me.
As he pops up.
All right, go ahead, Lisa.
Lisa looks better.
Good evening all, this is Lisa Strickland, Finance Director. As Larry mentioned, just wanted to give you an update regarding the utility customer communications during the pandemic. As you know, city staff suspended non-paid disconnects for both residential and commercial customers back in March, March sixteenth. We also closed the customer service lobby in March eighteenth. We suspended all late fees and convenience fees for credit card payments in March. And then Governor Cooper issued the executive order on March thirty first to do, provide that for the residential customers to suspend the disconnects and the late fees. We already had it in place. So as the executive order requested, we've been sending out blasts of information to our customers through email, website, utility bill messages, automated courtesy calls, any way possible that we can get word out to them that, you know, they're still responsible for their bill, but we're not cutting off right now. And if they need any payment arrangements, they can contact us and do so. So where we're at now, as of May twenty fifth, the customer service building did reopen. We're just having a limited number of customers in the lobby. Convenience fees for credit cards are once again being charged as of June first. Saturday, May thirtieth, Governor Cooper did extend the executive order for an additional sixty days. So there are no utility disconnects for non-payment or any late fees being assessed through July twenty ninth. The executive orders included just the residential classes. We've been extending this to our commercial customers as well. We're, we're treating them exactly the same, and we recommend continuing that until July twenty ninth. We're also encouraging the payment arrangements just as before. Just to give you an idea of where we're at, we have six hundred and seventy two residential accounts that are delinquent as of today, totaling just over two hundred and forty three thousand dollars. In commercial accounts, we have ninety three, those total one hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So far, a hundred and fifty five people have made payment arrangements and we've waived five thousand one hundred and sixty seven dollars in late fees. Just wanted to let you know where we were at with everything, so in case you get any, you know, questions in the community or or that, that's, that's what we're up to.
Councilman Anthony, you said ninety three commercial customers, does that mean, ninety three commercials?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Salute.
I'll give you your name.
I'm, I'm assuming council members, there's a motion to adjourn, is that correct?
I'm ready to call a roll.
Is it, is it adjourned or recessed?
It, it would be adjourned unless there is anything being done during the break. I'm assuming there is not, so this would be to adjourn the session, Mayor. Is there?
Okay, adjourn, okay.
Actually, Mayor, if there is anything being provided to council that are in the room, it would be better to recess and then can adjourn after you've received whatever might be of waiting for you.
Repeat that.
We, we would recommend that you recess.
Echo in here or something, I hear part of it.
Go ahead and start and let each person say.
You need, you would need to recess. So it's a motion to recess and then, or it's actually, Mayor can declare recess and then we'll handle the adjournment as we normally handle.
Let me call a roll and see what we got.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is good.
Gordon? Councilman Gordon?
Recession, I'm all for it, yeah.
Holloway?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Kazir?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Kilgore, yes, we are, we are, we're, thank you very much.